All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session for Thursday, June 17th, 2021. The time is now 4:06 PM. Due to concerns over COVID-19 exposure, the city has implemented measures to protect our community, including the closing of council chambers and limiting public attendance to electronic means only. Members of the public may view the live meeting proceedings on Tempe Channel 11 or attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex Events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. The first item on the agenda is the call to the audience for issue review session items. Speakers have up to three minutes to address the city council. Madam Clerk, were there any speaker or comment cards received from the public or anyone wishing to speak?
Mayor, I do have three items that were requested to be read into the record related to item 2B.
Okay, sure, go ahead.
First item is from Shereen Lerner, PhD, Member of the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. Dr. Lerner writes, "Over the past several months, I've had the opportunity to participate in the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. I am also a member of the Tempe Police Citizen Review Panel and have been afforded the opportunity to learn more about our public safety through Tempe leadership. All of these experiences have given me a perspective on the strengths and weaknesses of the department. The task force was a unique opportunity to hear from a myriad of voices about their experiences with the Tempe Police Department and consider how our community can be strengthened with improved policies and procedures. One of the most important things I learned is how important it is to strengthen partnerships between the police and our community, and that city management and our elected officials are a critical component to developing and enhancing these partnerships and providing the necessary fiscal support. I'm very supportive of the five pillars that were created by the task force that will help improve our system. I believe there needs to be some refinement to the details of some of the pillars, and I understand that this will occur, but overall, the concepts are sound. A key to the success of the recommendations by the task force will be to provide the funding and support necessary. Some of the recommendations by the task force require a change in culture, while others necessitate a shift or increase in funding. It is important that our public safety officers are on board with the task force recommendations and that they know they have a voice and the support and resources needed to enact them. I also believe it is important to continue to involve the community. It would be my suggestion that the task force be reconvened on a biannual basis to receive an update and provide feedback. It would also be helpful if the police department could provide updates on their programs and procedures to the task force. In this way, the task force could see progress that is being made and also provide feedback. Final reports such as this are not static and need to be adjusted and updated as needed. Signed, Shereen Lerner, PhD." Next item comes from Robert Ferraro of Tempe Officers Association. And Robert writes, "Dear Mayor Woods and members of city council, as the president of the Tempe Officers Association and a 14-year member of the Tempe Police Department, I write today to thank you for the opportunity to have participated over the last eight months in the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. This was not always a comfortable process, nor do I agree with everything said or recommended in this series of meeting, but I do believe that many in this group worked together with mutual respect and everyone involved shared the same primary goal: building trust, accountability, and dialogue between the community and the Tempe Police Department. In my view, one of the best attributes of Tempe as a place to live and work is the city's unwillingness to simply accept the status quo. Instead, Tempeans, Tempe leaders, and city employees seek out opportunities for change, and we exercise tolerance even in the face of disagreement. The task force was a fine example of that. Rather than live in an echo chamber, it afforded those who participated the opportunity to hear from community members, community activists, subject matter experts, city leaders, and TPD employees. When there was disagreement, there was respect. When there was discomfort, there was a chance for growth and better understanding. As an organization, the TOA supports many of the task force recommendations, including several recommendations we supported publicly even before the group convened. There are also several recommendations we cannot support, but we believe unequivocally that Tempe residents deserve the best possible police force. In turn, Tempe police officers deserve proper training and staffing, innovative approaches towards mental and physical health, support from our local leaders, and the funding needed to recruit and retain the best of the best to serve those residents. To the extent that the task force dialogues and recommendations help accomplish that, I believe the process was a success. Let me close by renewing the offer I made to all who participated in the process. I will make it a priority to meet, listen to, and talk with any member of the community who wants to discuss Tempe and the TPD. I share their concerns and hope it can improve the mutual respect enhanced by the task force during our meetings. Thank you sincerely, Robert Ferraro, President, Tempe Officers Association." Last item comes from Amy Pedato at GCI Grand Canyon Institute. And she writes, "The Grand Canyon Institute is grateful for the opportunity to collaborate with the city of Tempe to consider opportunities to reimagine public safety. The Grand Canyon Institute is a nonpartisan think-take that provides research regarding the fiscal, budgetary, and economic impact of public policy in Arizona. The purpose of the Reimagining Public Safety Project is to help the city of Tempe respond to public calls for the evaluation of how public safety is provided provided for in the city following concerning and at times tragic incidents between the police and Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The project will use data-driven research to examine the function of the city's police department, including what services police are called upon to provide for the community and the funds allocated to undertake that work. In addition, the project will map the social services available in the community and identify any unmet needs of residents. Collectively, this research will help to identify opportunities to more efficiently meet the public safety and social service needs of the community in a manner that reduces interactions with the criminal justice system. The project will culminate with a research report and policy recommendations submitted to the city of Tempe. Thank you, submitted by Amy Pedato, Executive Director." And Mayor, that concludes the public input.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk, really appreciate it. Next up, we have item 2A Issue Review Session Items. And item 2A is Municipal Operations Site Master Plan Recommendations. So I'm gonna call upon Marilyn DeRosa.
Hello, council. I'm Marilyn DeRosa, Mayor and members of council. I'm Marilyn DeRosa, I'm the Director of the Engineering and Transportation Department. And we've been working, as you know, on this study along the Rio Salado Corridor and for the last several months. And you've provided, in the past, you've provided some great direction. And I think that the presentation, hopefully, the presentation we provide you tonight, you'll be happy with the recommendations that we make. Our team includes some folks from Makers, the consultant that we're using. And on the call or in the meeting tonight to answer any questions you might have are Greg Kent from our Engineering Division, Julie Basick from Makers, her colleague, Rish Ukel from Makers, and then myself, of course. So they'll take the presentation from here and walk us all through the goals of the study and the ultimate recommendations. So Julie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Marilyn. Just a quick sound check, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me okay? I can't see you, so I'm gonna assume that I'm good. Okay, great.
I can definitely hear you all good over here.
Perfect, thank you, Mayor. We are delighted to be here to present what we believe is our pretty final recommendations for the Operation Master Plan Study. Today, as Rish is getting the presentation up, yeah, here we go. Today, our agenda, as I believe this is the third time we've been in front of council. Certainly, you've had numerous conversations with staff. So we're gonna very briefly cover the project goals, spend most of the time reviewing our draft recommendations and phased implementation strategy, and then hopefully get your confirmation on our approach to wrap up the study. Next slide, please, Rish. Go ahead, one more, please. So you might remember, we have five project goals. We are charged with addressing the city's operation facility deficiencies and making sure that this plan prepares the city to meet the long-term needs of a variety of operations uses. We are looking at four in-scope properties and identifying the optimum use for those, each of those, and ensuring that we are aligned with the city's vision and maximizing the development potential for the Rio Salado Corridor. A small but important component is we are ensuring that our recommendations are compatible with Evebomb operations adjacent to the proposed 143-yard development, which we'll be talking quite a bit about, and overall, charting an achievable and cost-effective recommendation and implementation plan. You probably also recall, we have four in-scope properties. The two on the right are your smaller but currently fully utilized yards, traffic ops, and hardy yard. You have a large, partially-used property on the Rio Salado Corridor, the Priest Yard. And then the 143-yard nestled in between Highway 143 and Evebomb is currently vacant aside from a small one-acre portion in use by Evebomb. Our users were varied, and they are listed there in the colors on the chart. You can see the space needs for each of those uses looking into the future. So this amount of space should set these uses up to be able to serve the needs of the city of Tempe and your community, you know, 20, 30 more years out. In total, these uses, you're gonna need about 39 acres to support these uses. And it is notable that some of these functions benefit from co-location, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. Your big space needs are currently compost and nirt yards, solid waste fleet, and IT. And this is the technical part of IT, it's warehouse operations, radio shop that needs about eight and a half acres, all the way down to the print shop, which needs about half an acre. I think, yep, that's, I think, the important information here. Council members are invited to ask any questions about any of these uses or their space needs if they like. Go ahead, Rish. For location, it's important to note that even though, you know, your land is scarce within the city, a central location for most functions is really important. It either serves the community directly, needs to access parts of the city, or serves city facilities. So most functions require that central location in the darker blue noted on the map. However, compost and nirt yards, container shop, and police impound could be located in outside city limits or in a less central location. However, depending on where those end up, that might impact customer service access, or for the police impound might make it challenging as if it's outside of TPD jurisdiction. So last time we were in front of council, it's been a couple of months, but you might recall, we spent quite a bit of time going over our main findings of the alternatives analysis. So you've got one slide to jog your memory here. There are really three main points. Number one, maximizing use of the 143-yard. That is a really golden opportunity and great site to support these uses. Number two, redeveloping Priest Yard for highest economic benefit is the recommendation. So Priest Yard as a long-term, it's done, it's done a great job for you, supporting operations use in, historically, in the long term, the potential economic benefit from redeveloping that lot to Idea Campus or other, you know, appropriate use to encourage economic development along Rio Salado is really a great idea and will provide a lot of benefit to the city as a whole. And then finally, traffic ops and hardy yard, given their size and their location, are recommended to be sold and redeveloped as soon as the operations functions can be relocated. So a one-slide executive summary of our recommendations are to build a crew headquarters at the 143-yard. We believe that's the best site to locate solid waste, fleet, IT, and the container shop, as well as traffic ops, streets, and parks maintenance. Notably, traffic ops and streets and park maintenance can be located in a central renovated warehouse if you find one that's in reasonable condition and can be purchased and renovated to support those uses. Our recommendation for facilities, custodial, and print shop is to purchase a renovated warehouse within the central area of Tempe. Those are great uses, they're relatively small, they won't take a lot of renovation. But well, depends on the condition of the warehouse, but they're fairly straightforward to be able to purchase a warehouse, and that will provide some cost savings over new construction for those uses. And then finally, we recommend purchasing a new site for compost and inert materials. Police impound, if you find a warehouse for either traffic ops, streets, or park maintenance, you could cite the impound lot at the 143-yard. But if the, those four uses in the bullets in the 143-yard all are located there, then you won't have room, and you will need to purchase property for the police impound lot as well. Okay, at the end of our briefing in March, council said, hey, we support the direction that the Operations Master Plan Team has come up with, but we really need to understand the cost implications of these decisions before we can completely buy off on them. So we're back with that information for you today. So in summary, we've identified construction costs for each of these functions in the chart at right. Note, these are a range of costs, they are rough order of magnitude for planning purposes. And each of the functions, because we evaluated so many different permutations to mix and match these functions, we've provided the cost range for each of them separately. However, it's not the kind of thing that you'd wanna add up all of the numbers and get a total as how you put these individual uses together causes you to be able to get some cost efficiencies, et cetera. And of course, it also depends on how you're gonna phase out these investments over time, and we'll show you some phasing estimates in a couple of slides to follow. So some other notes here in terms of the cost. These costs all include substantial contingencies and soft costs and assume construction cost escalation once we show you the out-years that these are anticipated to be phased into. They also exclude a few things that are notable, including special site prep. So any special conditions, soils to remediation, et cetera, is not included. In addition, furniture fixtures and equipment and relocation costs are not included. So just to hit a couple of high points, I won't read the chart to you as you've been looking at it as I've been setting it up here. We've got a, your most expensive component is your fleet maintenance shop. That's also one of your most critical needs. That shop today does not support those operations currently and certainly not into the future. So that's a project that's gonna cost you, you know, just around 30 million unless you can, yeah, that's gonna cost you about 30 million with a range of 26 to 32. There's other things notable here, I would say, at the very bottom. The, to develop the 143-yard with the operations uses does require an additional access road and multi-use trail. We actually just think that's a good idea, it's a relatively low-cost item of a million dollars, and it'll improve circulation and operations there into the future. Okay, next slide, warehouse renovation. We also wanted to show you the basis of our estimates. And I should note that our cost estimates were provided by a cost consultant that looked at benchmark projects all over the West Coast, but primarily in the Tempe, Arizona, area. And our land costs were provided by a local broker who looked at comparable sales and a whole variety of different permutations to come up. And they both gave us ranges of low, medium, and high costs, and that's how we built the ranges that you're seeing here today. So for renovation, we assume, since we didn't have specific sites, that you would need to put about 50% of new construction costs into a building in order to accommodate these functions, and then also improve the site with paving and landscaping, et cetera. So we use 20% of new construction costs for that. For purchase costs, like I mentioned, our local broker, subconsultant, provided us a range of 90 to 115 bucks a square foot based on the recent comparable research. And top line, you can see that for facilities, custodial, and print shop, we believe that the warehouse renovation option will cost you somewhere between seven and nine million roughly to cite those uses. For parks maintenance, if you go new construction, about nine to 12 million. If you renovate a warehouse, our estimates are seven and a half to 11 million for that use. And then for traffic ops, the one, the bottom third of the chart, we estimated between 11 and 16 million for new construction and about 10 and a half to 16 and a half for a warehouse renovation option. And those, of course, the warehouse renovation option includes the purchase as well as the renovation estimate. Okay, a couple more slides here on the implementation strategy. And then Rish will show you some of our test fits of the 143-yard. So we're recommending the following four main steps in your action implementation plan. Number one, you relocate traffic ops to a central reasonably-priced warehouse, or you complete it in new construction on the 143-yard as your Phase 1 construction on that site. Number two is Phase 2 construction at the 143-yard. You're starting really to get your headquarters, crew headquarters built out there now. You've got solid waste fleet, IT, and the container shop. Number three, renovating in-town warehouse for facilities, custodial, and print. And number four, completing the 143-yard Phase 3 construction for parks maintenance. So a couple notes that I think are important to highlight here. We, in terms of time, recommend relocating compost and impound as soon as you can find viable reasonably-priced property and on or before you determine that the, it's time to sell the Priest Yard. So you have some flexibility, but when you're ready to redevelop that and get the economic benefit, then those uses need to be cited and relocated. Existing yards will be ready to sell as soon as those phases are complete. So here's what the spending looks like over a number of years based on the new construction option for traffic ops. So we've taken our cost estimates and escalated them to the year of construction, et cetera. So the first phase, as you can see, the orange is traffic ops construction, and the hatched is the yard sale. Then we've anticipated addressing police impound, finding property and building that facility. Then Phase 2, that's in blue, solid waste fleet, IT, as well as the shared facilities. So you'd have your training room, your wash rack, et cetera, out there in Phase 2. And then Phase 3 is print shop, custodial warehouse, renovation for facilities team and that group, as well as construction of parks maintenance. So you'd be ready to sell the hardy yard when you complete the spending. Next phasing alternative is traffic ops in a warehouse, looks very similar, just starts with purchasing and renovating a warehouse and then moves through the remaining phases in a similar way. So near-term priorities for implementation are to search, as I know you are looking out there for a well-priced centrally-located warehouse for traffic ops, complete the master plan, which we're talking to you about today, either renovate the warehouse or build traffic ops at 143, and then you'll be ready to sell the yard. In the medium term, we're thinking staff should identify the GO parameters. So what size, what location, other, you know, key factors, and initiate the search for property for facilities, custodial, print, and that's a warehouse, as well as the land for the compost yard. If traffic ops ends up at the 143-yard, then you'd also want to initiate your search for the police impound lot. Okay, with that, I'll turn it over to Rish. He's got one last section here to just show you our test fit proof of concept for the 143-yard.
Sorry, I can unmute myself. All right, thank you, Julie. So as you heard from Julie's presentation earlier, so our recommendation is that the 143-yard becomes your future crew headquarters. So we worked with staff to identify a few conceptual layouts for that site for the functions that we are recommending. And the purpose was just to identify whether the functions that we are proposing would fit on that site and would work for the crew that are reporting to that site or not. So we're calling it test fits, and so there's two over here. There can be multiple different options for these sites. So we should highlight that these are not final designs. So these are very conceptual, and we have worked with staff to identify the two that are most promising. And they all have their own pros and cons. And so I will take you through one of them, which is the one on your left, test fit one, just to show you how it'll be phased in and to show you the flexibility around how you can work with this site. So a brief orientation on what you're looking at. So the, the orange bars on the left that says Phase 1 with the line next to it, that's the remnant of the cash flow model that Julie was presenting a few slides earlier. The bottom is the legend, and I will be explaining that with the site plan graphic that you see on the right for the 143-yard. So there is an existing road to the site, which is the, that connects you to Rio Salado Parkway. So that is the, that is accessed by most of your fleet today, and it will continue to be the access for your larger fleet in our recommended test fit option. The, the road that you see that straddles sort of the western edge of the 143-yard with the two south 48th Street sort of arrow, so that is the, the new access road that Judy was talking about earlier. And this would be your staff and visitor access primarily. So the colored, or that you see on the site right now, so there's an orange, that orange indicates its traffic ops and streets, so similar to the phasing model. So anything that's in solid indicates it's an admin shops or a warehouse or your covered structures. And that's in hatch, that is your yard storage. There is a brown with similar logic, so the colored is your admin functions or storage or warehouse, and the hash indicates it's a yard storage, and the brown is your future phase. That's your Phase 2 and 3 construction, which I will be getting into the next set of slides. There's two shades of gray on the screen, so the darker bands that you see on the western sort of edge of the site, that is your fleet parking and of different sizes. And the lighter bands of gray, that's towards the southwest and the south edge of the site, that's your staff and visitor parking. So I should note that the, both the fleet parking and the staff and visitor parking, they won't be built all at the same time. They will be phased in, so as different functions relocated the site and their requirements increase, this will be incrementally expanded. So for the simplicity and for the purpose of this presentation, we have not identified the phases. So only the built and the yard storage functions have been identified for this presentation. The last thing on the graphic is the light gray, or the light green that you see along the edges and between the parking. So that is the code required site landscaping for the site. And yeah, I will onto the next slide that talks about Phase 2. So as you saw, this is the heavier constructions, sort of more cost-expensive portion of the, the construction phases. The, the big building that you see in the center and the lighter shade of blue, that is your fleet maintenance shop, the 30 million construction that Judy was mentioning. And it is flanked by fleet staging on either side. So these are vehicles that are, city vehicles that are parked before and after repair. There is two shades of blue that you see towards the, the bottom of the design is the lighter shade indicates it's your solid waste admin. And the darker is your shared function, so that's your training room and gym that can be accessed by all the users of this site. There's another darker shades of blue that's central, north of the fleet shop. That's the vehicle wash up, again, a shared immunity for the site. And the big chunk that's northeast of the And the big chunk that's northeast of the site, that's your container shop. So the solid is the, the shop and the covered storage and the big hatch, that's your yard storage for all the containers. I should note there are two circles that you can see. These are, these indicate that there are multi-story construction on this site, which is two-story in this cage for your admin or your shared functions, and in some cases for your storage functions. What it just allows you is that reduces the building footprint. So makes it easier for your large vehicles to maneuver on the site and also dedicates a portion of the site that is, can be kept aside for future expansion if required. Moving on to the, the last phase, the green that pops up on your screen, this is park maintenance. The, the green sort of solid at the bottom that you see, that's your admin shops and warehouse for your parks. And the one on the, the upper end of the site, that's the, the yard and the covered storage functions for the group. So to pop all the colors up, so this is the, after full build out of the site, just to give you a brief orientation, so the upper part indicates it's your yard storage and your crew functions on the top. The fleet, the fleet maintenance shop in the middle, your admin towards the, the southern edge of the site for all the functions. And the western edge is for your fleet parking. And towards the, the bottom left that you see is the, the staff and visitor parking and their access. That's the next steps. Just to wrap on the schedule, so we are at the finishing line for this project. So we are at the final, the pre-final council briefing, which is the, the second last line item that you see on the right. We are wrapping up the project in the next few months and working on the final report.
Take questions?
Yes.
Hear feedback.
Great, thank you so much, really appreciate the presentation. I'm going to go to Councilmember Adams.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. And I appreciate this excellent presentation. You both did a, a great job and just made me proud, so good job on this. So I'm thinking that the 143 yard, we could have everything go into that yard, and that would be an efficient use of our resources, correct?
Do you mean all the functions that we were showing in that yard?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we think it's a great site for your operations uses and that you can fit fleet, solid waste IT, traffic ops, and parks maintenance. All of those functions fit well with some room for expansion, as shown by our test fit.
Okay, and that would be a good way to share resources and things like that in, on the 143 yard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, and very helpful, good job on the presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any other council members with any comments or questions? Uh, Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, my question's about compost and inert materials. So do they necessarily have to go together? Does the site have to do compost and inert materials?
Councilmember Cubey, this is Marilyn, Mayor and, Mayor and Council. I think that the best person, probably the best person to answer the, about the operations of compost and inert is Terry. Terry P. Cars, the Director of Municipal Utilities. I don't, I don't know if they have to go together. I, I, I do know that in this study, we haven't done a big analysis of how much space they would need, or, you know, we didn't really analyze those operations very closely. We analyzed the use of the facilities, the, the built environment, rather than the space. And so I think that Terry's probably the best to answer that. And we didn't, we also didn't go in search of any properties or do any kind of analysis about the, about compost or inert, about, about the operation or the functionality or the.
Yeah, no, no worries, that can always be answered later, I understand maybe that's too much in the weeds. But, but I did think that in past discussions, that we were looking at alternatives to buying property to host the compost operations, that we were going to look at existing, existing areas or businesses. I think that is comes to mind, I mean, obviously we have to do an RFP, but I thought we were looking at that option because we want to somehow keep it very accessible to our residents who are used to getting compost and having access, and that we weren't looking to necessarily buy property to host composting.
If I might, I think the big takeaway from our work and given the scope of what we were looking at is that your existing properties, the highest and best use of them is not to hold your compost inert. And that our recommendation is that they be cited elsewhere. And absolutely, Councilmember, the city will need to determine what size, how to, how that operation should be configured, and if there are partnership opportunities to support that in the future. So that would be a next phase effort focused just at that. I think the big takeaway here for us, and Marilyn, jump in if I'm misstepping, is that the, that, that function is not the highest and best use of the properties that the city currently owns for operations.
Yes, I totally agree, I totally agree. And I know composting in our organics program, green organics program is, is legendary, and it's just such a perfect example of circular economy model, and it's doing such good work for us with our integrated pest management. There's so many benefits, and so I know we're not talking about it going away at all, but yeah, I was just interested in, in relocation and realizing that we don't necessarily have to buy property to make that happen. And happen actually maybe in a more effective manner. So thank you so much, I appreciate your presentation today.
Sorry, I couldn't get myself unmuted here for some reason. Let's see, anyone else from council, any comments or questions on this item?
Hi Mayor, this is Councilmember Garland. I just wanted to say that I, I really appreciated the presentation and the background information that you gave us to review. I think your work is amazing. I really like the test fit one and the test fit two drawings that you proposed. I was going to ask about second stories to make sure that we are utilizing the space the best that we can, but I see that you have that covered on, on your slides. I just think you guys have done a great job, and I really appreciate the information for us to be able to go through and, and make decisions on later, so thank you so much.
Thank you, next up, we have Councilmember Aronando Savage.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to dittle that too. I think that this is a really awesome presentation. It just gives us so much information in regards to being efficient as we possibly can, understanding what works well together and what doesn't. You guys are super knowledgeable, and we're very lucky to have you as partners. So thank you very much for what you do and bringing us this really valuable information. So I think as we move forward and, and work on relocation and maximizing the use of our facilities, I mean, this information is invaluable, so I'm, I'm really grateful and appreciative, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aronando Savage. Anyone else from council, comments or questions? Right, great, um, question on my end, Marilyn. Do you need any further direction for this evening or just sort of, you know, presentation, just to give the council a sense as to where we're headed? Or do you need us to provide anything more right now?
Mayor, Council, I think that, I, I feel like we started out this project with so many questions. And we, you know, I thought, I don't know how we're going to figure this all out, but Makers has been a great partner. And I feel like they've provided us some really good recommendations with, with the support of the council, but, but the direction you provided in the previous presentations. And I think we're at a good spot. I think that, that Makers will wrap this study up, and then I think it's going to be really useful for us in making decisions about our, our operations and our properties.
Wonderful, excellent, Marilyn, thank you so much. Very, very thorough presentation with lots of great information, as all the council members said previously. So I just wanted to thank you for putting this all together. And right when we started, there were a lot of questions, and there are definitely far fewer now because of the great work that's been done, so thank you so much, appreciate the time.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have item 2B. Public Safety Advisory Task Force Recommendations and Update Building a Community Safety Plan. And I'm going to call up Rosa and Chowsdy, our Deputy City Manager, and I believe also Chief Jeff Glover, Chief of the Tempe Police Department.
And there he is. Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Rosa and Chowsdy, Deputy City Manager. And we have with us?
Jeff Glover, Chief of Police, City of Tempe.
Well, thank you for this opportunity to share with you high-level oversight of how we are implementing an overall community safety plan, strategic plan for the city of Tempe. And if we can start the PowerPoint, thank you, Greg. The three objectives today is to give an oversight and idea of the implementation plan, also talk about the intersectionality of all the programs that we have within the city and how that intersects with the Public Safety Advisory Task Force Recommendations, and our beloved community and workforce, how we hope to involve them further in this process, and then look to you for some direction regarding some next steps. Next slide. Oversight and implementation is very important when we're trying to undertake something of this magnitude. First, before going into the Community Safety Steering Committee that we have created interdepartmental within the city, the city manager actually took an initiative to make sure that someone became the point of contact for shepherding these type of, this type of initiative, this very citywide reorg of looking at how we want to create a modern city for community safety. So what you see before you is the Oversight and Implementation Team of a Community Safety Steering Committee. As you can see, we have everyone from the city manager's office, Neighborhood Services, our fire, medical, rescue, obviously our police department, Human Services, CARE 7, and all the touchpoints that we believe, at least a starting point, add to the conversation as far as implementing the recommendations that we have seen, or at least exploring those recommendations, and coming back to the Public Safety Advisory Task Force, along with the collaboration of all the other programs that we have in the city. Next slide. We often talk about our strategic plan and cross-cutting themes and the importance of making sure that everything aligns at the city of Tempe. The city has undergone huge transformation regarding data and a lot of collaboration on our citywide strategic plan. This is no different. So what you see before you is the intersectionality of what we're creating as far as community safety, a comprehensive approach to our city. I will start from the left to the right, and then the chief will, will share with, with you some of his perspectives regarding what he's creating within the department. We all know that the right to breathe is an initiative that we've created, collecting, collaborating within our city and our departments and our community, looking at how do we create initiatives? And how do we address the proactively reach vulnerable communities, especially our youth? And as it's seen from the community's perspective, and how we interact with city departments with our youth, especially BIPOC, Black, Brown, Indigenous, and individuals of color. Equity in Action, as we know, is fostering a greater community connection, engagement in, in our city government process. We want to have more involvement from the community regarding our government process, our budget, our city strategic plan. Equity in Action is the right team that is helping us with that. Community Reinvestment Roundtable is actually proactively grassroots organizations within our city and regionally that have asked to have a seat at the table, to be involved in understanding how government works. But more importantly, it's not driven by the government. They are coming in and working with the Human Relations Commission and, and our city, looking at how do they understand more about budget and are able to give feedback on all those different functions within our government process. And Chief?
Yes, thank you, Deputy City Manager in Chowsdy. The Police Community Advisory Group is made of a diverse group of 12 individuals that are from the Tempe community. And this forum provides a consistent opportunity for the department to receive direct input and recommendations from Tempe community members on challenges that we currently face as a community. This group assists us in proposing solutions that are related to our programs, training, legal issues, and/or any other challenges that we may identify. The Chief's Employee Advisory Group was created to assure open, direct, and consistent communication with line-level employees from every area of the department. We have a diverse group of 16 employees that were selected to represent and act as a conduit to their respective areas. The group focuses on the overall needs and goals of the entire workforce as we serve our community.
Thank you, Chief. You heard earlier from Amy Padetto, who submitted a letter, and from the Grand Canyon Institute. And that is, we are so fortunate in Tempe to have so many community partners that are willing to help us understand this transformation that is not happening just locally, but also nationally. And Amy and her researchers will be helping us as we construct this new modern city of community safety. Public Safety Advisory Task Force, we will, in a few minutes, discuss a little bit more about the recommendations they have set forth. And we can actually go into the next slide. So as we know, we always, in the city of Tempe, lead with the end in mind. That is strategic planning, that is how we have guided our city, and understanding that we, as public servants, must start with the community, and that has been no different with this process. In October, the mayor set forth to courageously enter a conversation with our community willingly, without having anyone coerce us to doing that. And we set forth and, and looked at how to, how to do that. And I want to share with you, because I think now, when we're stepping out of this COVID, we forget what it was like in October of 2020. And when we set forth to create this platform of conversation, normally we would do that in person. And we actually had to train ourselves as staff, as council, and our community members, who are the 22 task force members on three different platforms of how to engage and connect on a very emotionally charged conversation. I just want to applaud not just the staff, the council, but more importantly, our community members who took training courses on how to enter those different platforms in order to volunteer and to share their perspectives. So thank you very much for doing that. As we have mentioned, what you have before you is the Task Force Recommendations. They are high-level, five recommendations or five pillars. I will not share all the 18 strategies or recommendations within those five pillars. But the chief and I would like to share with you some of the ones that we will be looking at and addressing this coming first year. We have identified year one, two, and three. And obviously, it's always fluid, we might be able to accomplish more in the first year. But if I can just share with you, so what you see there is five pillars. Police Model and Accountability Pillar, the Human and Social Services Pillar, Data and Transparency, which is very important, Community Engagement, also just as important, and Workforce, Culture, and Wellness Pillar. And as we look in within that Police Model and Accountability Pillar, Restructuring Public Safety Roles and Calls for Service is something that we will start addressing right away. And that is really, in short, looking at 911 calls for service. And perhaps the best way to, to summarize that approach is looking at the right person on the right call. And we are going to be hopefully engaging with some subject matter experts on helping us decipher how to approach that. The next one in that, within that pillar, is assess, assigning a council committee of the whole. And that is one thing that I'd like to ask the council to consider. The Public Safety Advisor Task Force has asked for oversight from the mayor and council in some form or fashion. So I would like to visit at the end of the presentation and ask for any direction that may be important in accomplishing that oversight. And then the chief would like to talk about number two of Human Services and Social Services Pillar.
Yeah, so as we look at the five different pillars in this presentation, there are several areas where we identified as projects that we had already either completed or are in progress. It's reassured us that we're headed in the right direction as a police department. And under the Humans, Human and Social Services Pillar, Creating Response Model, Safe for Responders While Reducing the Use of Force. As we look at that, one of the examples that we can provide is the development of the Department De-Escalation Program in partnership with Arizona State University, that helped us design a specific program for police officers and for our dispatchers as well, that has received national attention as a model program. Additionally, work is being completed on. Additionally, work is being completed on partnership with Solari, formerly known as the Crisis Response Network, to divert mental health calls through the city over to our partners at CARE 7.
Additionally, I would just like to add one correction to the information that you did receive regarding the background information and details regarding this plan. One specific area of recruitment that was recommended that the NAACP would help us in recruiting officers. The correction is it would be NAACP, not the BLM organization. That it would be NAACP, Roy Tatum and his organization. I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified for the mayor and council. Next slide. So when we look at next, oh, is there a question? Okay. When looking at next steps, we talk about subject matter experts. This council is well aware that we are always looking for local, national benchmarks that help us accomplish the important work that we're doing. In your pocket, you had received an application. We were invited to apply to the Harvard Kennedy Lab, who has created, who is creating a 911 cohort to look at this very thing that we have identified as the right person on the right call and looking at reimagining what 911 could be. So we are hoping to be selected and to look at other partners and work with other cities nationally and see what best practices are looking like. We also are looking at mental health, the importance of making sure that we understand subject matter experts on mental health, not just both for our community and for our officers. There was a lot of conversation in our Public Safety Advisory Task Force about the importance of both. Technology and innovation. We know that we at the City of Tempe understand the importance of leveraging technology and innovation to advance greater community outcomes. And the chief has already been working on some, exploring some of that technology. And perhaps the chief would like to share briefly one example of something that we have, that they have demonstrated in use.
Yeah, so we currently are beta testing some cutting edge technologies such as bullet wrap devices that can apprehend a subject from a safe distance while using the least amount of force possible and taking somebody into custody. And it's a very humane way of being able to, being able to approach in a situation, especially when you're dealing with somebody that could be seriously mentally ill. So we've found good success with that. There was a recent news article or story that was done here locally and that actually spread around nationally on the success that we've had with it. And so we're pretty excited about the, the use of that technology in the future. If we could go back one slide, I would like to address something under workforce real quick. And, and under that is the workforce, culture, and wellness pillar. Under that particular pillar, currently, the, the city manager, the union president, Rob Ferraro, and I had discussions about funding that would go towards counseling and psychological services for the needs of police officers. And it's important to, and that, you know, that I believe everybody understand that we know that, you know, mentally and physically, you need to have a healthy staff members to go out and provide the best public safety as possible for our community. Under, additionally, under the modernizing discipline and accountability, we have a force review committee in our CRP panel with, within the, the department, which assists us reviewing. And at times, we'd look at a review and we actually are looking at retraining officers on deficiencies based off of what comes out of the force review committee. And that's become an extra step in our process. That's added some, some good value for us to make sure that we're correctly training our officers as well as additional subject matter expertise that's coming in from the Collaborative Reform Initiative Technical Assistance Center, which is a long word for CRY-TAC. It's a group funded through the cops office out of the section of, from, from under the arm of the Department of Justice. And they're assisting us in reviewing current policies and providing feedback for best practices.
Thank you, Chief. So in just summing up the subject matter experts, police data transparency, obviously. This was conversation that we started having between our IT department, Mark Wittenberg, our IT director, the chief, and myself back in October of looking and researching best dashboards, police data transparency, the importance of that practice. And obviously, it's also a recommendation from the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. I just wanted to let the mayor and council know that while it's not identified specifically in year one, that is something that we are already tackling and exploring. And that's, we, we know that data builds trust, and that's the importance of building those dashboards. And lastly, the status updates, cadence of communication. You heard from Dr. Shereen Lerner in her, in her letter, the importance. And we committed to the Public Safety Advisory Task Force of biannual updates on, on the work that they have recommended to our city. We, we know the importance of honoring that work and communicating updates. Also, just as important is identifying stakeholders. I have heard from the faith community who also wants to be involved moving forward. And community, other nonprofits, working with Octavia Harris. And workforce, obviously, our, our workforce and our six sided partnerships, very important to us. Things that we're very familiar with when we created our diversity strategic plan in 2002. And lastly, a public dashboard implementation progress. We know communities want to know and be involved. And the way local government best does that is by creating dashboards. We have seen that in the last five years with our, our workforce. And this will be no different. So we are now exploring with our information technology team, our GIS and our office, exploring what that platform could look like, make sure that it is accessible and easy to navigate for our community. Next slide. And then lastly, I just wanted to appreciate again the work of the task force. It, it was not easy, some sessions. And, and I just applaud that we got through some very tough conversations, but all with the idea and the commitment to this community to do what's very best. And one last thing I'd like to share, as we started exploring best practices, the chief knows this because we've discussed this. And looking at some of the dashboards and platforms that other cities have had as far as best practices as we create data transparency, we noticed the consistency is that they're under a federal consent decree. We met with the city of Oakland, we know that Ferguson and Baltimore. And I'd like to say that we are proud that none of what we're doing is under a consent decree federally or by a community. So this is, this is an area that we have stepped in and embraced because we know it's the right thing to do for our workforce and our community and for better outcomes. So thank you. And Chief, any last words?
Yeah, I just want to, actually want to thank you Deputy City Manager Chauisty for the hard work that you put into this task force as well as your staff. The task force was challenging from a very many different aspects, bringing together so many different voices and varying perspectives. But it allowed us to have a meaningful dialogue with our community and understand their concerns. What helps us in being a better police department. And so I think it's going to be very impactful for us moving forward in the future.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor, I will turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you so much, Deputy City Manager Chauisty and Chief Glover. Really appreciate the presentation. I'm going to look to Councilmember Adams, since I see she has her hand up.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Well, this is a historical presentation. And why do you ask? We have our first female deputy city manager ever at the City of Tempe and our first African American police chief ever doing this presentation, presentation tonight. So I'm very proud and so happy that we have such great diversity in our senior management team. So congratulations to both of you. And just thanks for your amazing leadership to both of you. I want to just say a few more things. And I think it's important that we retain, recruit, and be creative about taking care of our police officers' mental and physical health. I do believe, and I know this will happen, that the TOA will, needs to be included in the process as well as all the community members that would like to participate at large, which I'm, like I said, I'm sure it's going to happen. And I just want to thank all of you that participated in this valuable task force. And I'm glad that every six months, you're going to reconvene and have updates for everyone. So thank you to both of you and thanks to the task force. I really appreciate it and thanks for being valuable members of our incredible community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Adams. And next up, Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was less than a year ago, a little bit more ago, that you stepped up to be our mayor. And you, in very tumultuous times, there are so many, so many things happening in our country, in our city. We had a train derailment, we had a small number of, of an international epidemic. So these were trying times, but, but always you kept this uppermost of mine that we needed to, you know, not do listening sessions, not just, you know, have forums or town halls, but really have a task force that would be focused with subject matter experts that really had a deeper understanding, not just of reforms, because we know sometimes reforms don't make a difference, but had understanding of the deeper structural tennis, has deeper structural issues and problems that we have in our city, that every city has, that every state has, every country. Our country has institutional racism and white supremacy. And we need to really tackle it. And so you took on that challenge and I was such an honor to serve as one of the council members. So thank you for that. Thank you for stepping up and, and being willing to have us ask uncomfortable questions, have us answer in uncomfortable ways. It's really, Mr. Mayor. And then Rosa, Rosa, Rosa and Wydell and Chief Glover and every, all the other staff members, but Rosa especially. I've just been so impressed to watch your leadership and your, your incredible intellect in bringing this massive enterprise together because it's been quite a process. And it's been so important to make sure that voices are heard, that the voices just aren't sitting around the table, but those voices are the table. And that the subject matter experts are there to, not just to offer their advice, but their lived experiences. And through, through those voices, we heard the experiences of families that have been victims of violence. And sadly, even victims of police violence. So Rosa, you, you created such an open space. And I, I ran into some, some people coming out of City Hall yesterday that are part of the reinvestment roundtable, part of the public advisory task force. And I learned from you that they had been visiting you at City Hall and they had never been to City Hall before, inside City Hall. They were outside City Hall because they had been at protests, but they had never been in or invited into City Hall. And that, that really struck me, struck my heart, you know, because that, that's so true. Like that we don't necessarily engage the people that are most impacted by the decisions and policies that we have as a city. So Rosa, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's, it's, I know it's just the beginning of the process and that, that's where all the, the heart and work and guts are going to come from. But we're, we're really established a good roadmap. And there's so much I expect out of this process. I know, I like what Dr. Lerner said, that we need to continue reinvesting with the group that we work with and continually come back to them and ask for advice and counsel. And occasionally they'll, they'll need to shake us up a bit, right? So that's important. And I also want to thank Rob Ferraro, Tempe Officers Association. I think, you know, people can make assumptions that someone who's head of the Tempe Officers Association isn't going to be open to change. And that's just simply not true when you, when you think about Robin and his experiences and what he's brought, brought to the table. And he hasn't always agreed with a number of the recommendations that's come through, but he's often been spearheading them, especially when we talk about changing and reprioritizing some of our operations and shifting human services away from the police department to where they rightfully belong, I believe, in human services. So for those of you out there who think that maybe our budget doesn't reflect these shifted operations, the process is ongoing. It's not just happening in a yearly way, it's happening in a monthly and mid, mid-cycle way. It's also seen in the present day budget. When you see that we've established a family advocacy center that in our next fiscal year, that we're looking at congregant sheltering for our homeless population, that we're hiring more outreach workers with homeless outreach workers, that we're shifting the way that we see public safety first and foremost. I know we have a lot of work to do. And I, I had a very difficult conversation with a resident who called me and said, why are we talking about institutional and systemic racism in Tempe? Tempe is not that way. And I had to say in a, in a way that, you know, this isn't something you say in a, you know, on a Facebook post or you say in a big public way, but it's so true that if institutional racism, if racism is institutional, if white supremacy is systemic, then it is here, it's everywhere. It's in our city, it's in every city, it's in every, you know, human being, especially human beings like me, a white woman of privilege and a liberal white woman of privilege. The kind of woman that, or a person that MLK talked about in Letters from a Birmingham Jail. And I want to be very open to that process. And to sum up, I just want to thank all the staff and, and all of the advisory task force members. There's many of them on the call today. And so I just treasure the advice and experiences that you provided. And we hope we will live up to your standards. There's so much more to be done. So thank you for your patience and thank you for your passion and for your expertise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Next up, we've got Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I want to thank everybody too, but I think Lauren did a really solid job of just highlighting everybody that took part in this effort. And I will tell you, this was a very large effort. So you guys really did amazing work bringing people together, having those tough discussions. And Mayor, I just want to say thank you to you. You, you know, Lauren's absolutely right. You, you kind of had a lot of trial by fire when you first started and you handled it with, with grace and dignity from, from day one. And everything that we've done is always to make us a better organization and a better community. So I'm really grateful. And Rosa and Jeff, thank you guys so very much for being open minded, for doing this, pulling everyone together and every single task force member that took the time, you know, stayed on. I, I mean, I try to stay on those calls sometimes, but they were pretty long and intense. And so I certainly do appreciate everybody in the sense that you really did give people a voice. You let them sit around the table and have that conversation. And that's the Tempe way, that's who we are, that's what we do. And, and I don't see that ever changing. So I just want to say thank you, everybody, for that first and foremost. And I will say, you know, I took a lot of time to, to read the information, to go through the pillars, to go through every single recommendation. And you know what? There are some of them that I really truly love, maybe some of them that I don't agree with. And I know we'll vet those out as, as we move forward. But, you know, I do, I, I do just want to kind of highlight a couple of those recommendations that I thought were really phenomenal. And, and one was including the expanding officer wellness. And maybe even the reimagination of the 911 call center. And of course, I think we are really vested in technology and we need to ensure that our police department has the ability and the right resources to gather all that data so we can make great data-driven decisions. I mean, that is really, really important. So I, I love those things. I think they're really a good idea. And Chief Glover, thank you for just taking the time to kind of let us know what you're already doing. I, I want everybody, you know, that are on the front lines, our first responders, our police department to know that I, I know that this isn't everything, this is a piece of a larger puzzle, right? And we are always trying to better ourselves. So thank you for, for being open to that. But thank you for also sharing some of the things that you're already doing and that the partnerships that you're strengthening with ASU and the de-escalation. I know we just increased officer wellness and we engaged more CARE 7 workers. I mean, so we are doing a lot of these really great things. What brings me to one of my biggest frustrations, right? And you guys are probably going to know exactly what this is, is we do not tell our own story very well. And we have done a lot of really good things, not just within the police department, within all of our departments. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. But we do a lot of really good innovative, innovative, forward-thinking things. And I would really like to, as we move forward with this, just request that we continue to highlight a lot of those things so our community member knows, I learned more things from reading this, from talking with you, Chief Glover, than I even knew. So even as a council member, I would like to be just as informed of everything that's happening to ensure that we are telling our story, whatever that may be. So I, I loved the fact that we're, we're always working, we're always looking for positive change, positive opportunities. I love that. I hope that when we do sit back down and evaluate these recommendations, everybody is at the table, including our officers. Rob's been great as a TOA rep and him, and to me, super respectful too, and very open to sitting down and having these dialogues. So Rob, I'm sure you're probably on the call, I just want to say thank you. And I just really want to say thank you to everybody that participated in this process. And to let all of our first responder knows, especially the Tempe police officers that are out there every single day keeping our city safe, thank you for what you do. I think that we are one of the most phenomenal police departments in this country. And I will have your back always. So anyway, Mayor, thank you very much for that. And you guys, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, really appreciate it. Next up, we have Councilmember Garland.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just kind of just want to say ditto to Lauren and ditto to Robin. And that should be it. They pretty much said everything I wanted to say, but I, I just verbalize it obviously to you guys. I, I just verbalize it obviously to you guys. Rosa and Chief Glover, thank you so much for what you have done. Thank you so much for all the work and time that's put into this by the entire community that was participating in this process. It is absolutely amazing. I really, really love on slide four, the intersectionality of all those seven different items that go into the community safety. Part of what happens here in the city of Tempe, I really love how you brought all that together, that it's not just one thing. It's not just the Public Safety Advisory Task Force. It's all of these things that are going to make us the best, absolute that we could possibly be. So I just want to say thank you so much for what you have all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland.
Mayor, are there any other comments? I just wanted to follow up for direction on one specific question that is still outstanding for the chief and I.
Um, go forward that. I've got comments after, but go first.
Okay. I apologize if I stepped in. I just wasn't sure.
No, no, not, not at all. There's no, there's no order here. It's okay.
The direction regarding Oversight Committee, that is one thing that was raised again during another meeting that we had with some of the task force members and, which I think is wonderful. I think everything that is accounted for gets done, right? So I ask for any direction or any ideas as far as what that mechanism would be. Would that be coming back to the council of the whole? Or would that be council committees? I'll leave it up to all of you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Rosa. My thoughts provided the councils, okay with this, and not to put them on the spot specifically, but that council members Joel Navarro and Doreen Garland are the ones who actually sort of have the public safety piece in their council committee. And my thought would be moving forward, you know, quite honestly, since myself and Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Cubey were the ones who were participating on the actual task force. You know, I know that I had conversations with Councilmember Navarro earlier and he talked about him wanting to be very much involved in this process. And, and I just, you know, so trust and respect Councilmembers Navarro and Garland for their expertise and what they bring to the table here. And I would love to see if they would be willing to frankly, take this in their council committee, just in terms of, you know, working with the chief and the chief's advisory council when it comes to getting updates and implementation. Happy if the council wants to do this as a council of the whole, but I just, you know, I just think that council members Navarro and Garland could do an exceptional job with this if we then relegated this to their committee. So with that, I will, I see Councilmember Garland's screen come on here. So I'm going to go ahead and look to her for a second.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I would be more than happy to take this into the Human Services and Community Safety Committee that Joel, the Councilmember Navarro and I have. So if that's the direction that the council would like to go, I'm more than happy to take that on.
Sounds good. Thank you. Let me look to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I like your suggestion. I fully support it. And thank you, Councilmember Garland for accepting. And I don't know where Joel is, but I know he's going to accept it too. So I think it's a great suggestion and I fully support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I support it.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Appreciate it. Councilmember Cubey.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I assume that we're talking about the Public Safety Advisory Task Force, that they would meet, what is it, six months? Sort of update and refresh and report back or have a larger group report back?
I think, I think we're, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Keep going. I'm sorry.
As Dr. Lerner was suggesting, because I think it's important to keep the same people engaged, the subject matter experts engaged that have been engaged up to this point. So that, but that's not mutually exclusive, right? Something we're discussing?
No, definitely not mutually exclusive from my perspective. And I think we're still kind of hammering out some of the details about what that feedback loop would look like. So, uh, you know, but I definitely know that, you know, I still on a regular basis, as does Rosa and Chief Glover, you know, we have conversations with members of the task force, as I know you do as well, Councilmember Cubey. So I think we're still kind of hammering out some of the details, but absolutely, as people who contributed so much time and energy to this process, we definitely would want to make sure that, you know, they know that we're always reachable and we always can provide information to make sure that they sort of know the status of some of the recommendations that they provided.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just once again, I wanted to say thank you for that consensus. So Rosa, it looks like this will then go to Councilmember Navarro and Councilmember Garland's committee. And just once again, just the, you know, think that they bring, they're a tremendous team to bring to this conversation, talking about community safety and working with you and Chief Glover to look at implementing recommendations. I, I will try to be somewhat brief here, but I want to just, you know, thank everyone. You know, first of all, to Vice Mayor Randy Keating and Councilmember Lauren Cubey for participating on the task force with me. I just really appreciate all of your support and being there for all of the meetings and just for being alongside me during this process. I wanted to thank the 22 members of the task force who gave so much time. All of the meetings, with the exception of the last one, were approximately three hours in length. And these were folks who were, you know, volunteers, who were coming in and giving of their time and their energy and their expertise and their passion to this subject. And so I just really wanted to say thank you to them for doing this, quite honestly. This was, uh, this was a long process. And quite honestly, there were lots of diverse voices. And I think that was the way that we deliberately put this together. We wanted to make sure that we had people, you know, who were both, you know, liberal and conservative, people from different parts of Tempe, people from some surrounding communities, people who'd been involved in protests, maybe some people who've never been to a protest, people from our faith community. We really wanted to make sure that that was, that this was a really kind of casting a very wide net when it came to perspectives and opinions on this subject. So I wanted to thank them for giving of their time and their energy to this subject. To the, you know, Strategic Management Diversity Department and now our Deputy City Manager Rosa and Chousi for, you know, frankly, you know, conducting such a, an excellent process along with Wydell and Jonay. Thank you so much. This was, you know, could be also very challenging because normally we would do something like this in person. And we would obviously have an ability to all sit in the same room and have these conversations. But given the COVID-19 pandemic, your team, you know, took this task on and frankly, was able to shift very quickly to a virtual format over, as you said, three different platforms and did a masterful job of getting all of the input and condensing it and creating the documents that we're using here to go forward. So I just wanted to thank you for everything that, you know, you and your team did. And obviously, congratulations, you know, on your promotion, very well deserved for all your years of service to the city of Tempe and for running such an exceptional process. And to Chief, Chief Glover, who I'm looking at right now as well, you know, who I've known since 2008, just like, just like Deputy City Manager and Chousi, you know, the chief and I first met when I first came on council in 2008, when I was all of 29 years old. And I believe at that point, you know, he was either a sergeant or lieutenant, frankly, with, with the Tempe Police Department. But he's a person who's been with the department for over 20 years, exceptionally well-respected, not only within the department, but externally. I remember when Chief Glover retired in February of 2020, the number of members of the community who I regularly bumped into who said, you know, if there's any way to ever get Jeff Glover back in a Tempe Police Department uniform, you have to find a way to do it. So I was overjoyed when City Manager Andrew Chang made the recommendation to the council that we bring Chief Glover back as our chief. And I just think he's just done an exceptional job. And I want to just once, once again say, Chief Glover started, his first week on the job, the task force meeting, I believe, was his third day. And so he could have very easily stepped into the role and said, while I value the task force and, you know, Mayor, you know, Rosa, what you're attempting to do, you know, I've got a department to run as the new chief of this department and I don't really, I might not have time to sit here. But the fact of the matter is, he rolled up his sleeves and he was in every single meeting the entire way through. And that is just the kind of person, the kind of, you know, man that he is and the kind of commitment that he has shown to the Tempe Police Department and just to the city of Tempe overall. And so I just wanted to thank him very much for being part of all of this and just for his leadership of the department. And, and just, you know, I'm just looking forward to, you know, just your continued leadership of the Tempe Police Department. And lastly, I want to say really quickly too, just to Sergeant Rob Ferraro as well, for all of his participation with the Tempe, as the president of the Tempe Officers Association. I've known, you know, Sergeant Ferraro for years, but we've had a chance to get even closer during this process, regularly meeting and talking. And I think his letter was exceptional, that he said, look, you know, there are some things we agreed on and some things that we didn't agree on, but this provided a format to frankly, come together and have some of these conversations. And once again, he showed up to every single meeting and took part. One of the things that I hear from a lot of members of the community and even a lot of task force members who took part in this process was that there are a lot of other places in other cities where they can't have a, they have a hard time getting a hold of, of the elected officials, or they can't get a hold of a Deputy City Manager. They can't get a hold of the chief of police or perhaps, you know, or of the association or union president. And the reality is every single person who I just talked about here, you know, from, from, you know, from Rosa to Chief Glover to Sergeant Ferraro, Assistant Chief Pooley, the council members, you know, they are, they have always made themselves available to answer any questions, to meet up in person or virtually. And I just think it says something about the character and the strength and the quality of the people in this organization, from the city manager's office, strategic management, the Tempe Police Department, all over. So I just wanted to say thank you so much to all of you for your efforts. And just lastly, to the entire city council, you know, even though there were only three members of this council who were, you know, kind of a part of the task force in every single meeting, the reality is, this would not have been able to be possible without your support. This was one of the first initiatives that I took on in becoming mayor. And I just wanted to say thank you to the entire city council and all of our staff and the members of the Tempe Police Department for having the faith in me to, to put this together and work on this process. It's meant a lot to me that you would have that much faith in me, especially so early on in my term as mayor. So I just wanted to say thank you to my council colleagues for all of their leadership and for their support during this process. So with that said, thank you to everyone. Thank you, Rosa. Thank you, Chief Glover, Sergeant Ferraro and everyone else. Really appreciate your efforts. And thank you again to the task force members for all of your time and all of your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. All right. Next up here, we have item 2C, which is future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. And in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Next item on the agenda is called the audience for committee of the whole items. Speakers have up to three minutes to address council and can do so on items that are specifically listed on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any items under call to the audience? Item number three.
No submissions for committee of the whole items, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you so much. We're going to move on to number four, committee of the whole items, which would be item 4A1, Downtown Tempe Veterans Banner Partnership Program in Fiscal Year 2022-23 Supplemental Request for Veteran Services. And I'm going to look to Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. This is actually a recommendation coming from our Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Council Committee, which has got to be one of the longest names ever. So I think Alex has coined us REV Committee. So I'm going to take that. So from our REV Committee, it was really exciting that many of you know Julie Kent with the Downtown Authority brought forth an idea to really help us recognize some of our veterans within our community, or those that are in the military, or those to be serving in the military. When she went home to her hometown one time and, and saw this great banner program that they were doing to honor different military members of different loved ones. So she brought the idea to us. We did a little research and talked about it a little bit and said, wow, this is, this could be really great and just create some synergy with what we do in regards to celebrating our veterans or the things that we want to do to continue to be a veteran-supported city. And many of you know, actually, Mayor Woods and myself created our very first task force to just talk about veterans initiatives and what the city of Tempe can do to really not just honor our veterans, but to honor those that are in the military. And then how do we all even honor our own veteran worker? So we really come a long ways. We, we put forth a lot of recommendations. We now have Veterans Commission, which also had the opportunity to see this presentation. And in your packet, you will actually see a letter of support from them. They loved the idea. They thought this was great. And I wanted to say thanks to Julie again, because she has really did, did a lot of the heavy lifting, kind of pulling this together, working with the banner program that does this across the country. So anyway, I know we have some slides, I think, or you guys had some slides in our, yep, there they are. Okay. I just want to make sure that we can see this. So this would be part of the banner design. Now, what the intent is, we would fly these banners in the downtown area during veterans, over Veterans Day month. So it would be for the month of November. And as you can see, many of you don't know who Jim Groan is. I hope you all do, because Jim Groan is actually just a longtime community advocate, does everything he can to help support the veteran community. He is actually an Army veteran himself. He is a Vietnam Vet. He was an ASU employee for 33 years. And if you've ever been to the Veterans Day Parade, Jim has actually chaired the Veterans Day Parade for over like 35 years. And we have one of the longest standing Veterans Day Parade, like in the state of Arizona. So thanks to Jim and all of his work. So we thought it was totally appropriate that we created a sample banner in his honor. Jim has just been a really great advocate, like I said, has been doing that Veterans Day Parade. And, you know, we're just so thankful for him and everything that he does. But this is a copy of what these banners will look like. You can see the front would actually have the person's face and then the back just with a great little saying, our logo and the Downtown, Downtown Authority's logo too on this. And it would just be a really great partnership, we believe, with the Downtown, Downtown Authority to be able to recognize our veterans and hopefully even expand beyond that. So what we're asking for tonight is to have a formal agreement with the DTA and just so they know that we're behind them. And then we also would like to ask to, what I know sometimes we do is we push forward all these recommendations and we never put together a price tag. What we'd like to do is just be able to offset some of the costs, a little of installation, picking them up, storage and taking them down. And so what we think it's going to be maybe about $5,000 a year, not, not a whole lot. But after talking with some other leaders in the area, we said, hey, you know what? Let's just, while we have the opportunity, we don't expect this to happen this year. We're actually going to go out and ask for support from different sponsors to help us get this launched this year, if the, if the council approves it right now. But next year, to look beyond just this program for the $5,000 and just ensure that all of our veteran-supported initiatives have the appropriate funding. So that's why we asked for $5,000 to $10,000. The five would definitely cover this program and then that other $5,000 window, just to, just to ensure that we are giving the right resources for the initiatives that we want and being able to support the commission's recommendations with creating veteran-supported businesses throughout the city. So hopefully I covered it all, but we're pretty excited to, you know, work on this partnership, get some banners up this year, let them fly for a year. That would be the whole intent. If you read the, if you read the memo, they would fly for one year and then two years if you'd like, or you could get the banner back. So we're pretty stoked about it. I don't know, Randy, if you have anything you wanted to add. That was a lot of conversation by me. I will let you go if you have anything you'd like to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Looks like Vice Mayor Keating's not currently on the line. But, but you, but you gave an exceptional presentation, so.
Yes. All right. Well, then, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see. First up, we've got Councilmember Adams.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, for the presentation. I completely support the program. And in fact, I would like to purchase a banner in honor of my father who served as a captain in the Army in the Korean War. So I will be right up there in the front of the line to purchase a banner. So thank you very much.
That's awesome. That's exactly what we were hoping for. We, we know that people love their family members and their loved ones. And, and we just want to make sure we kind of are able to keep it affordable for everybody to participate.
I love it. I love it. Such, such great news. Thank you for leading the effort, Robin.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Well, I absolutely love the program also. I was so excited, got a little teary eyed when I was reading through the proposal and looking at the idea, the banner. And I was thinking, okay, so now I'm roped into four. I've got my grandfather Code Talker in the Marines, my dad Navy, my brother Army retired, and then my nephew was just commissioned in the Army. So I'm, hopefully I can get four in a row, Robin. I'm, that was my request right now. So thank you so much for doing this. I'm 100% supporting it. Thank you for all that you do. And I love the fact that now I know who the person was that put together our veterans parade, because my dad loved it. When we would take him to go, he would just, he had to stand up and salute every single flag that went by. So he got a lot of exercise that day, but he absolutely loved it. You guys have done a great job with that parade. So thank you so much, Robin.
I think, I, I just want to say thank you guys very much too for that. Thank you for the support. And, you know, we're really excited. And Julie Kent, I just, I don't know if she's on this call, but she was really phenomenal and very patient, working through this process with us and making sure that we gave everybody the opportunity to give us feedback and input. But we just really think no better way to honor the loved ones in our life that have served or are currently serving in the military. And just proudly support it and see it for a whole month would be fabulous. So, and, and I just want to make this clear. We, we don't really have the name yet. I've talked to Nikki. We want to make sure that whatever we, we call this, the banner, it's, we don't want to call it the banner program, but it's going to have a really great name. And we're pretty excited about getting the DTA and our Tempe people together to, to figure that out. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Next up, Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and great work, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, great work, Councilmember Aradona Savage and Vice Mayor Keating. It's a wonderful idea. Is it possible to get the, uh, get it going sooner than a year and a half from now, considering that I imagine it'd be great interest and if there's any possible contingency funding to make it happen earlier?
Yes, absolutely. We want to do it this November. That's, that's our intent. But I didn't want to ask, yeah, that's okay. I, we didn't want to ask for any dollars out of the budget for this year, since we've already gone through the budget. So what we're going to do is actually try to get some sponsorships. And, um, I know some people that have already generously said that they would contribute. So I, I think we'll have enough to be able to get it going this year. And, um, with approval here today, hopefully we'll be able to secure the funding for the following years.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Also, I want to say I'm, I'm in full support of this as well. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Aradondo Savage, you and, uh, your work with, with Julie Kent of the Downtown Tempe Authority to make this a reality. And kind of as, uh, Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Garland talked about, uh, you know, you know, my brother's also an Operation Iraqi Freedom veteran. And so I would love to also, you can count me in for buying one as well for my brother, Brandon. So just wanted to, once again, thank you for, uh, just your exceptional work. The banners look fantastic and I can't wait to see them, uh, fly over our downtown in support of all of our people who've served. So just, you know, Councilmember Aradondo Savage, thank you so much again for everything you're doing and appreciate all the hard work here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next up, so we're going to go, we will go forward with that. Next up, we have, uh, item number four A2, Human Services and Community Safety Council Committee, 2021 slash 2022 Work Plan Revision. And that's, uh, Councilmembers Joel Navarro and Doreen Garland.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, you know, let's see, I'm trying to think, in February, um, we put together the council committees and I'm on the Human Services and Community Safety Committee and we, in February, voted on the work plan. And we knew that there was likely going to be adjustments in the future. And we also knew that based on how the first few meetings have gone, we might have to make adjustments for more like concrete vision. And I'm happy to say that we are a step closer in achieving just that. The most important thing to note about this revised work plan is that it does not provide our committee with increased scope. This revision does not in any way change the core objective of our committee. Instead, this new revision does two things clearly. It provides us more refined vision for our key priorities and it aligns our priorities to current and future performance measures. Our committee still has four key focus areas, but now it has 13 current strategic directions instead of 16. Joel, myself and our liaison Tim will be working closely with strategic management and diversity to provide a more coherent process that allows for us to initiate, track and recommend strategic directions that align to performance measures. We think this is a really important thing for us to do and we're really excited about it. So I just want to say thank you for your consideration and discussion about our, um, revised work plan. I love being a part of this committee and I'm, and providing policy guidance toward these critical issues that impact the lives of our residents. So I'm, I'll give it back to you, Mayor, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Uh, I'm good, but I'm going to go to Councilmember Aradondo Savage.
Yeah, no, Mayor, I'm, I'm really good too. And I just want you to know that I think, uh, Randy and I are going to be kind of watching how this goes for you guys, because I think if it's something that you feel has been very valuable and helpful, you know, we may join suit in, in regards to some revisions or at least staying open to that. So I, I hope you share how things go and, uh, yeah, 100% full support.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Great. Any, uh, let's see, Councilmember QB.
Sure. Yeah. It's always so important to stay flexible and adapt. So, uh, good for you and happy to support your changed plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Uh, I am good as well. Any other council comments or questions? There are none. Looks like Councilmember Garland, you have, uh, you have authorization to move forward, Zell.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right. Next up, we have item number five on Mayor's announcements and City Manager's announcements. I've got one proclamation and one other announcement here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry, I have an update from my committee as well.
Let me ask a question, just because it's not on the agenda, um, to our city attorney, Judy Baumann, or would we be allowed to take another update or?
Mayor, I think it would be appropriate if that was your preference to go ahead and take a committee update at this point.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to make sure we were on, on sound legal ground. Councilmember QB, go ahead.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Judy. So I have an update on the Sustainable and Livable Communities Committee, which for short, we're just going to call it the SUSTI Committee. Let's just make it short and easy. But I co-chair that committee with the honorable Councilmember Jennifer Adams. So thank you, Jennifer. At our May meeting, engineering staff gave us an update on the International Green Construction Code, the IGCC, which, as you may recall from 2019, we included that in the original Climate Action Plan. It's something that we want to consider and staff has been doing exactly that and working behind the scenes on, um, the IGCC. And staff spoke to us at that meeting about how elements of the IGCC were already included in the design for the fire station number two. And there were challenges finding appropriately trained and certified architects, contractors, inspectors, engineers and the like. So they're keen on continuing to explore what this might look like for internal city construction projects specifically. So to provide them the space and the support, uh, we want to, um, ask you today for consensus to allow them to work on a draft of an internal sustainable buildings policy based on their recommendations and experiences with fire station two. So we're not, we're not asking for any commitment today or any particular policy. We're not asking for any resources, just allowing staff to put together that document and bring it back to council at a future date. And I wanted to see if Councilmember Adams had anything to add.
Thank, thank you, Councilmember, uh, QB. I appreciate it. Anyway, uh, no, I think you've covered it really well. I just want to add that this Wednesday, we're going to have, uh, Dr. John Harrison, uh, from ASU, who's a leading, uh, professor in the world on mosquitoes, also present to our, uh, our meeting, but you covered, uh, the green infrastructure well. Thank you so much.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB and Councilmember Adams. Really appreciate it. All sounds good to me.
So that's, we have consensus then to, um?
Everybody, everybody okay with, uh, the, with, uh, Councilmember QB's comments?
It sounds great to me, Councilmember QB and Councilmember Adams.
Thank you.
Me too, Mayor.
Perfect. Wonderful. All right. You've got direction to go forward. Thank you so much. All right. Now, okay, we're on to item number five here. Mayor's announcements and City Manager's announcements. I've got one proclamation to read here. It's for World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. So I'll go ahead and read. Whereas the city of Tempe, Arizona, joins municipalities, organizations and individuals around the U.S. in recognizing the 15th anniversary of World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. And whereas elder abuse is an intentional or negligent act by any person that causes harm or serious, or serious risk of harm to an older adult, and it is a serious crime against some of our nation's most vulnerable citizens, affecting at least 10% of older Americans each year. And whereas 46 million people aged 65 and older are living in the United States today, with this number projected to increase an additional 18 million by 2030. And whereas Americans are living longer and the number of individuals over 60 will continue to grow more quickly than those under age 17. In nine years, one in four Tempe residents will be at least age 65. And whereas older adults of all social, economic, racial and ethnic backgrounds can be targets of elder abuse. And whereas the city of Tempe is working to promote a better understanding of abuse, neglect and exploitation of older persons by raising awareness of cultural, societal, economic and aging factors that contribute to elder abuse, as well as prevention, reporting and investigation of the types of abuse. And whereas working in conjunction with dementia-friendly Tempe and age-friendly Tempe initiatives, the city of Tempe recognizes the valuable role its aging population has in maintaining a livable community for residents of all ages. Older adults contribute to the city through contributions of time, service, knowledge and wisdom, while helping to sustain economic stability and guide future growth. And whereas World Elder Abuse Awareness Day provides the opportunity to promote a keen understanding of abuse, neglect and exploitation of older persons, to focus on prevention of elder abuse, as well as reporting of all events of abuse, incidents of abuse, and to provide protection to vulnerable and older adults. Now therefore I, Corey D. Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, to hereby declare June 15th, 2021, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Tempe, Arizona. A couple other quick announcements that I just wanted to make. I just wanted to give a couple of, uh, happy, happy birthday greetings. I wanted to give a very, uh, happy birthday to Mayor Mark Mitchell, who I know his birthday is today. I just wanted to say, if he's watching right now, I wanted to say, uh, happy birthday from, uh, from me and the entire city council. Uh, I also wanted to say, uh, also on a very big point of personal privilege, a very happy birthday to my father, who also, uh, whose birthday is today, who turned 82. And I have, I'm going to be calling as soon as this meeting wraps up. We were, uh, probably going to have dinner normally, but you know, obviously, uh, council duties, uh, you know, sort of, uh, trump that sometimes. And my father always wants me to make sure that I'm focusing on my job and, uh, he and I can grab dinner another time. But I just wanted to, uh, you know, just, uh, give a big happy birthday to my dad and his 82nd year on this earth and just, you know, for everything he has provided to me to be the person that I am. And I honestly would never be where I am without him and the love and guidance of my mother. So I just wanted to say, Dad, if you're watching, happy birthday. I love you and I will see you for dinner on Saturday. With that said, I'm going to go to, uh, Mr. City Manager. Any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I do have one announcement. I just want to say, earlier this week, uh, I received official word that our, uh, longtime dedicated city employee Greg Wolf, who is here today, helping to produce this, uh, broadcast of this meeting and has been working, uh, in various capacities related to that with Tempe 11 and with, uh, video production here at the city of Tempe for 32 years, has announced that he will be retiring, uh, in August. So he'll be here for a few more meetings and we will have ample opportunity to recognize and to congratulate and appreciate him for his, uh, his career of service here at the city of Tempe. But I just wanted to say here tonight, uh, thank you so much, Greg, for everything you've done. You, you've worked, uh, behind the scenes, uh, and made, uh, the city of Tempe and its video productions and Tempe 11 and these council meetings, um, just really, really technically proficient. And we will certainly miss your expertise in this arena and, uh, wish you nothing but the best, of course, in all your retirement pursuits. So with that, I have no more, uh, I have no more, uh, items tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. All right. The item number six, uh, next meeting date, which is August 12th, 2021. As many of you know, the, uh, council goes on a little bit of recess after our next meeting on July 1st. So our next meeting will not be until August 12th of 2021 of this work-study group. With that said, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 5:49 PM. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good night and have a great weekend.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy birthday, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.